We've been at it too far. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. I welcome everybody here this evening and those watching on cable. The first item on our agenda is a proclamation for Veterans Day.
Yes. Town of North Reading Veterans Day 2015 proclamation. Whereas on Veterans Day, America becomes one in honoring our veterans to commemorate their legacy of honor, pride, courage, bravery, and sacrifice. America is strong because of their profound love of this great nation. We as a nation must support our veterans, for we would not be in America if not for their sacrifices. And whereas on this day, we recognize the 70th anniversary to the end of World War II and the monstrosities of one of the most historic wars that have plagued the warriors of that era, whom we have come to know as the greatest generation. We recognize the 40th anniversary to the end of the Vietnam War. Veterans of this generation received unjust treatment upon their return and deserve positive recognition and gratitude for their sacrifices they made. And whereas on this day, we honor our warriors for continuing to uphold and safeguard the very principles upon which this nation was founded, emulating our forefathers and continuing to carry on the values and traditions that were instilled through the generations. They continue to serve in harm's way, keep them in prayer. And whereas on this day, we must be ever mindful of our veterans struggling with mental health issues, addictions, and homelessness. We as a compassionate nation must be proactive and work together to assist and guide them, and we must work to end homelessness once and for all. And whereas on this day, we must continue to educate the importance of honor, respect, and appreciation for the bravery and sacrifices our veterans and warriors have made. Take time to participate in activities and events that honor those who have served and continue to do so. And now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Reading that all citizens observe the 11th day of November 2015 with appropriate ceremony and prayer in honor of our veterans and warriors whose steadfast desire was and is, through valor and sacrifice, to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. We encourage you to continue to display the American flag with pride on your homes, offices, and town buildings.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the Veterans Day proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Manapelli, second by Mr. Prisco. Oh, Miss Ole.
Veterans Day.
Would you like to say something?
No, I just wanted to hope that everybody's gonna be open. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. The folks at home can't hear you. It's not open home.
Hi, Veteran Service Office is Sue Magner. Just hoping that everybody is gonna be able to come to all the activities on Veterans Day. We do have a, actually, we have a female veteran. She's still actually currently serving in the National Guard, and she's also a mother of two Marines. So she's gonna give us her views on the, from the woman's point of being deployed and what it's like on her end, as well as being a mother of two in the service. But I'm anticipating Senator Tarr, as well as Representative Jones, to be there and as well, I'm assuming, everybody else is gonna be able to have the time to come in and join us. But we have a lot of activities going on for the kids that day. We're also, I also incorporated cards that I sent out to all the elementary schools that I printed up to have all the kids do up Veterans Day cards, which will get delivered to the nursing homes for our veterans, as well as the VA in Bedford.
Are you expecting any members of the board to make a speech?
Yes, sir, I would love to have somebody from the board speak.
We'll determine after you leave.
Okay. Thank you.
On the motion, first. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous? We have a liaison to the veterans, Mr. Yule.
Yes, that's me.
Are you interested in making a Veterans Day speech?
Um, yes, I will do that. I'd be more than glad to do that.
Okay. You hear that?
What time?
Till seven.
Ten o'clock.
Eleven is the...
Sorry about that. It is Wednesday, November 11th, and it is at 11:00 in the morning. It's always on the 11th day of the 11th month. Also, I'm looking into finding out from the, I'm gonna get word back from the Batch Elder School, they're doing their program honoring the veterans. I believe they have two time slots going on, 9:30 and 4:00, but we're doing a double check on that. And I will announce that on Veterans Day as well. Actually, it's, I think it's great that they're doing it the day after because it gives me an opportunity to announce it on Veterans Day with the veterans there and everything, so. And the proclamation, Mr. Yule, you gonna be doing the proclamation as well, or?
I can do that if you can.
I'll read the proclamation.
You're going to, Mr. Masari? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. Next item on our agenda are the minutes of October 14, 2015, which is our strategic planning session. Mrs. Manapelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October 14, 2015 Strategic Planning Session Minutes as written.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Yule? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? And we have the open session meetings of October 19th. Mrs. Manapelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October 19, 2015 Regular Session Minutes as written.
Second.
Do we hear a second? Second by Mr. Yule? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? And lastly, we have an executive session of October 19th.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October 19, 2015 Executive Session Minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Next item on our agenda is approval of the August legal bills.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for August 2015 in the amount of $7,889.08 as follows. Compliment and page PC General, $6,701.08. Compliment and page PC Labor, $1,188. For a total of $7,889.08.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Mr. Gilberto, any issues with that? Those have been reviewed.
Yeah.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Anyone here for public comment? Your chance, boy. Kinder Morgan Pipeline.
Any comments he makes, he owns the air. He owns the air, kicking the...
Kinder Morgan Pipeline update.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief update, continuing the presentation that was made at the last meeting by Selectman Yule. We have had a conversation with Kinder Morgan, and we've received indications from them that when they file with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on or before, or on or about... Certainly. Just again, so that everybody can hear. We've met with Kinder Morgan with regard to the status of their application, and we are expecting that they will apply to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on or about November 20th. We have received indications from Kinder Morgan that the route that they will be including in their filing will be very similar to the route that has been publicized over the course of the past eight or nine months, or longer, through North Reading, largely following the national grid right of way from the northwest to the southeast side of town. There was some concern that there might be an alternate route that they would be looking at as well, further impacting town, but at this point, it appears that that will not be the case. But again, we eagerly await the additional detail. Certainly, I think it would be our preference that the line was not coming through town at all. They did not get any, give any indication that that would be the case, but that at least the route that they have been discussing with us is still largely the route that they would be following. And the impacts wouldn't be beyond that. A number of us, including Selectman Yule, the town engineer, the fire chief, and I attended the open house on Thursday evening. It was very similar to the open house that they held in Andover. We had made a request to Kinder Morgan and through Congressman Moulton's office to have FERC present. My understanding is that FERC declined to participate, and they were not present. My understanding is also that there were a couple of residents who were present. We didn't cross paths with them, but I have communicated with them by email. And finally, we are receiving the most updated information from Kinder Morgan as to the exact parcels along the route that would be impacted, and we expect to mail to those impacted property owners to invite them to a community workshop where they would be able to provide us the feedback that we wish to take forward to Kinder Morgan with regard to our continuing concerns about the route through North Reading. Selectman Yule, I don't know if there's anything further to offer at this point.
No, I think you covered it all.
Jeff, there was a specific timeframe for becoming an official intervenor?
Yes. Yes, there's 21 days from the date that they submit their application. And I think they indicated it would be November 20th, is that the date? So you'd have 21 days from that point on to become an intervenor, of which you would contact FERC. Do you have their email address, by chance?
There are directions for filing that are available. I don't have them readily available, but...
Okay, I'm sorry, I should have had that.
Perhaps we could make them available.
We will. We will make that...
Put them up on the website.
For the public, yes, yes.
Probably put it on our website, too.
And just to clarify, we as a board can become an intervenor?
That's correct.
Can individual citizens become an intervenor? Whether or not they're impacted by...
And anybody can become an intervenor. You don't need, you don't need to be an impacted...
Directly impacted.
Directly impacted, or an abut. Or you can be anybody in the state of Massachusetts, and you can be an intervenor. The argument can be that if you're destroying, if it's gonna impact the wetlands, then even though I live on the other side of town, it's still wetlands to my town and my community, so you can, if you have, that's your argument, then you can, you can become an intervenor.
So I think it might be worthwhile at a meeting, at a public meeting. Clearly, when we meet with the abutters, we ought to provide that information. But we ought to either put it up on the website, clearly what the intervenor's rights are, et cetera, et cetera, how they become one, and maybe even discuss it at a future meeting, you know, right after we know for certain that they're filed on November 20th, as they said they're gonna file.
November 20th, I believe, is the date.
Yeah, the link that FERC does have is very clear and easy to follow, rather than us kinda come up on our own.
Okay.
I would definitely, if we're gonna put something on the website, I think that link would be...
Put the link, yes, yeah.
That's the best spot. They have the application right there online, simple fill-in, and all the information's there.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Anything else on Kinder Morgan?
Just one final note for those impacted property owners. You know, that clearly, through its discussions, the board continues to be concerned with regard to the impact on the private property owners, and we're taking the strongest position possible to protect the interest of the town as a whole and the private property owners who may be impacted. But the staff in the town hall as well has spent a considerable amount of time trying to understand the route, understand the details of the particular properties, and will really, will depend on the feedback from those property owners as well as to what exactly is the situation about their particular property. Again, certainly, I think everybody's preference is that this not be the situation and that the route not come through North Reading. And that may be entirely possible as an outcome down the road, but at this point, we continue to receive feedback from Kinder Morgan that they're looking at this route closely and that we should expect it to be included. So we'll do our best to provide the information from the private property owners who wish to provide it to us. Thank you.
FY 2017 budget update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a note with regard to assembling the package. Included the revenue and expenditure spreadsheet in the Town Administrator's Report as the first attachment, so that actually relates to Item 8 on the agenda, so that's what I'll be referring to here. But the financial planning team had its first in-depth discussion of the FY 17 budget at a meeting two weeks ago. You know, I think that because of the planning efforts that have been underway, looking at a three-year budget in terms of the revenue and expenditure forecast, the information has kind of been out there amongst the stakeholders for a few months now. In terms of the direction being provided to the department heads, through myself and the finance director, we'll be asking them to submit level services budget for, budgets for consideration. And again, the finance director and I will meet with the department heads to review their budgets and to review any areas where they felt it necessary to make requests outside of that level service budget as well. It'll be similar to the budget process that we followed last year, and we'll continue to keep the board apprised as we move forward. And again, we'll have a draft of the budget to the selectmen and to the finance committee no sooner than two, no sooner, right? At least 14 days prior to the Saturday public hearing in February. Again, it should be very similar to last year's budget process, and we continue to have an open dialogue amongst the finance committee, the school committee, and the selectmen representatives at the financial planning team meetings.
You might mention that the financial planning team is looking at a three-year rolling revenue plan and budget forecast, albeit the focus will be on the FY 2017.
That's correct. And I think that part of it is for planning purposes now, but also as we get towards the end of the budget process and it becomes clear that things are really tight, it'll hopefully guide us in making decisions that will be beneficial to the town and sustainable to the town for the long term. So, Selectman Masari, I appreciate your efforts to keep us focused on that long-term analysis. Thank you.
Questions? Just in relation to, I'm just looking at some of the numbers here and some of the assumptions. One that just jumps off the page is the new growth. You're looking for a, you know, $95,000 increase and then a $75,000 decrease the following year. What do we have on the...
It's the revaluation that's driving that number being so loud in '17. So the revaluation that we funded in October will kick in, and we expect that we'll see a jump in new growth, in that one particular year. The numbers are conservative, as you know, from the certified free growth for this year, as they historically are. But that allows us to generate the free cash that we need to go into the October town meeting.
And then the payment in lieu of taxes. What cost, who says it, RMLD primarily? And I hope you don't have anything factored in for HILVIA right now.
No, I believe that that...
Spread even with a 50 each for the next four years.
I have to confirm with Liz, but she's either got it factored in there as a withdrawal from the stabilization fund into which we put the money in October, or she has it shown as a stabilization revenue, but I'm not sure which one it is on here. But she's well aware of the...
So we put the amount in the debt stabilization fund, and one quarter of it would be applied to each year's budget going forward?
I'll confirm to make sure it's accounted for in the right spot there, though.
Anything else on the budget?
Just as far as water revenue, that reflects our new agreement with Andover, the anticipated use and collection of revenue to cover that, too.
Which line you're...
Just water revenue, that's all. Basically, it's water bills.
Well, we don't have the enterprise revenue expenditure on this particular spreadsheet, but when we work with the Public Works Department, we'll make sure that it's incorporated.
That will also be adjusted. We will have a water rate hearing prior to the June town meeting. That number will most likely get adjusted if it isn't right.
Right. To both of those points, I think one thing that I'm committed to is the discussion about the water rates happening much earlier than it did last, this past, well, this current calendar year. I distinctly remember it coming up during the budget process, and it was kind of an unbalanced discussion because we weren't really talking about the rates. So we'll try to have a rate projection in place as well for review during the budget. We may not ask for vote on the rates at that point, maybe a little early.
Quarter before would be ideal, then we wouldn't have the complaints of...
Got the catch?
Yes.
Anything else on the budget? Town Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, I already spoke to the first attachment relative to the budget. It did include some information relative to the 2015-2016 influenza season. Some of you have seen updates that have been circulated by the Health Director, Bob Bracy. By the numbers, at this, as of last week, 350 vaccinations were issued at two townwide clinics, 32 issued at the senior center, 14 issued at the PBD Court, 16 vaccinations issued through the food pantry, and 20 administered to residents of state group homes in town. There were also four that were issued to town, to homebound visits. It's a resource available to the residents. Again, I continue to ask people to be aware that they have an opportunity to get vaccinated for the flu through the Public Health Department, but also through the pharmacies here in town or through their, through their medical provider. And I want to recognize Bob Bracy for his efforts to publicize this and to communicate the results with the town as a whole, along with his administrative assistant, Susan Doherty, and the public health nurse, Susan Swanson, their continued efforts. I think they have it down to a science, but it, as you can see, it's a lot of people. In a short amount of time, they've only been doing it for a few weeks. I noted that we had experienced an issue with regard to the most recently mailed water bills. The bills that were mailed out, in some instances incorrectly totaled the amount due for water. Corrected bills have been mailed to those who were impacted, which was approximately 450 accounts, and I included copies in here. But again, I asked the public for their patience. I know that it, the timing probably couldn't be worse on the heels of the challenges of the costs associated with the most recent water bills mailed out in August. So we appreciate your continued flexibility while we work through the implementation of the Munis programming. I know that...
Is the fact that it's a small percentage of the total, how does that happen?
It was, I think, limited to those that were delinquent. That's why, those that were delinquent, they got showed as a total amount due in the bill.
Oh, okay.
There wasn't an accurate depiction. That's why it was limited. And a final note, unfortunately, time has not allowed for the vehicle policy to be modified in time for this evening's meeting. I hope to have a modified version for the board to consider at the November 16th meeting. And that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for the town administrator? Mr. Prisco, you wanna start?
Sure. So our next meeting is November 16th, and we're going to be doing the tax, citing the tax rate?
Tax classification, yes.
Is there gonna be a presentation this year?
Yes.
Last year, I know it was just more of a handout. But in the presentation, I was hoping we can get a, if you could present the numbers, or the last year, or I should say, maybe even your verification. With the commercial businesses, that income and expense, getting them in, you know, the decisions we made in saying change in some of the fees, or our protocols on how we're gonna handle things, if they don't get submitted, seem to be working for at least a few years. We went up to almost, I think, 70% response. Now, the last time she presented to us, I think it fell back down to the 40s, maybe even less. I was hoping we can get an update on that at the meeting. And we should have a discussion about what that trend means and why it's happening. We should discuss it as a board. Keith, if you're familiar with that income and expense process versus commercial, on the residential side, is an assessed value. If there's anything you particularly want from a certification standpoint, this is a good opportunity to pass this along to Deb Carbone to have it presented, whatever makes you comfortable. It's up to you. I don't know if you've given it any thought. I didn't know if you even knew that it's coming up on the 16th.
So what Michael's referring to is that tax, homeowners' tax based on property value. The commercial is based on two things. Commercial is property value and income.
That's fine. I'd like to get that data. And then, delinquent taxes, you have an update on that? I think we were making some really good headlines.
It swung the other way, fortunately.
Mr. Chairman, through you, just to clarify, I think you're suggesting a PowerPoint presentation rather than a verbal presentation, so I'm...
Yeah, 'cause the handout last year was really hard to follow.
Okay. Yeah, so I...
It'd be really, if you could maybe reflect back and...
Sure.
When you're first, I think if you...
Also, we go through this process, and we talk about percentages and things like that. Without an explanation, anybody in the public's watching or hasn't gone through it, like we have a number of times, finds it very confusing without a reasonable explanation.
I'll see if the finance director works with the assessor with regard to the presentation.
Anything else, Mike?
Just maybe pass along, congratulations to our sports teams. We've got football field hockey, football, and soccer all made it into the next round of competition, so I wish them all the best. And pass on condolences to school committee member, Mel Webster, lost his dad yesterday. So a pretty tough time for the Webster family, and my heart goes out to them. My condolences to him and his family. That's all I have.
Keith?
Yeah, I think just one thing. I just happen to be looking back, and I think that you have a meeting coming up with NORCAM. And it made, it made me, you know, look back in my notes, and maybe I can give some added information, I'm not sure, but... Their contract is up October 1st, 2007. I mean, '17, I'm sorry. Okay. Right. And it would strike me, 'cause I don't know what the purpose of your meeting is, but the, it strikes me as a good time to come up with some ideas, and maybe we as a board can come up with some ideas that we can recommend to NORCAM as to, you know, what we, what we might be a good thing for them to do on behalf of the town versus, you know, what the contract is. You know, it's a pretty generic contract, and there are a couple of things. You know, they're gonna cover hour meetings, and they cover the town meeting, and they cover the school meetings. And, you know, I always said they should be covering the CPC, you know, they should be doing something like that, that would be great if they could do that. But, I mean, this is a good time for the board to maybe have conversation and come up with some ideas.
So there are two things that are taking place. One is on the 19th, I think it's the 19th, which is, we're having, they're having their regular board meeting. I plan on attending. I think Mrs. Manapelli's planning on attending. Mr. Gilberto is trying to arrange just a small meeting prior to that. I don't know if you've confirmed that with any...
I have to check with Karen, Mr. Masari.
What?
I'd have to check with Karen, I don't know offhand if the date was confirmed.
So the intent is to, you know, get the dialogue going on a couple of issues plus, you know, we're going with the agreement and, you know, talk about our expectations.
I would, I mean, is there a concern that they are in violation of the contract, or...
No, I think that just, you know, there's an issue with them and the school building, secondary school building committee associated with commitment to put some cameras in that seems to have gone awry. And we, someone needs to bring that back together again. And I think this is just some general concerns about some rumors that I've heard. I don't know if they're true or not, so. And then the board had some comments at a previous meeting over the overall performance, and that obviously has trickle back to them, so. The intent is to sit down, have a discussion, see what their issues are, let them know what our issues are, and get them fixed.
I'm encouraged to get the minutes of their last couple of meetings, and I think there's some issues that you see... there's some issues that you see on their approach to how they want to deal with the schools, which, you know, we're close partners with the schools, and if they're going to treat them that way, it just doesn't seem like that's the most professional way to handle things. So, you know, as we all have many of those public access channels to look at, I know them for myself, I've watched a few of the others, and I see what Reading does, I see what Burlington does, and it just seems far superior to what we're doing here locally, so I'm not sure if that's our fault, if that's just maybe because we don't structure it well enough in our contracts. But I think we can be doing a heck of a lot more for our public access for the community. And I think it's a great opportunity, coming up in October of 2017, too. You know, everything should go off the bid. I'm a big fan of it, and I think we should just be very honest with them right up front that at least I'm going to push that we go off the bid, and see what other options are out there, and see if there is something we can do better for the community, because at the end of the day, it's for the community. They're the ones that are paying the bills, and that's where the money is getting filtered to them, so. I've been very vocal about it. I was at a strategic meeting, I was very vocal about my concerns, but that particular meeting that where they took certain votes, I think are very upsetting to me personally. And, you know, school committee and the school department doesn't deserve that kind of treatment. I know it's perfect. I don't think, I don't think they'd be the first ones, especially the SSBC. They haven't been perfect on everything, but to take what I read in those minutes, I felt a pretty aggressive move on their part. So I'm glad you're going to go to the meeting, and I hope you have an opportunity to read the minutes before you go, and maybe you can get some insight that I may not have received.
And in Dropbox, for those that haven't had an opportunity to review it, on 10/1/07, an agreement was signed. It's the agreement between the town of North Reading and NORCAM designated NORCAM Inc. as the community access corporation, and it's spelled out what we expect of them. There's opportunity for performance review, et cetera, et cetera.
Under NORCAM or under 10?
Yeah, it's in...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's right now, it's in my recents things. I have to go back and find the folder, but there's a folder in there, NORCAM, and there's a number of different documents in there, including audits, et cetera, so.
Got it.
Yes, Jeff?
I guess, I recall the last meeting that we had with NORCAM where they made a presentation. With all the complaints or concerns that seem to be out there, and I don't know particularly what they are, except for what I understand, the gym, that would have been a good opportunity during their presentation, during their operational presentation, to ask them questions in that regard. Because if you read, if you read their annual, annual, annual report, you see they've made some pretty good progress, and when they left that meeting, they were feeling pretty good that the board of selectmen were pleased. Now, that's a short span of time for things to go what appears to be downhill since that review.
Well, I, my position is this. At this point, I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt, right? I've just heard some things that concern me, and the only way we're going to get this resolved, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to sit down and discuss it. There's always two sides to every story, and hopefully we can, you know, get the issues resolved and move forward. The good news is that there is an agreement that, between the board of selectmen, and so it was an arms-length agreement that we formed back in 2007, right, to give us the right to raise concerns, and they have an obligation to present what they're doing to us, and if in fact there needs to be adjustments, then we'll bring it back to the board and we'll discuss it. But at this point, I think it's only fair to them and everyone else that we sit down and have a discussion, try to get to the bottom of what these issues are.
Thank you. I'm done.
Anything else, Jeff?
Nope, I'm finished.
Steve?
No, I'm all set. I just want to echo congratulatory, best wishes to the Hornets in their fall season. They're actually doing extremely well.
Yeah, what's happened? What's going on?
What's happened?
The turf fields or...
I don't know, but maybe we shouldn't go to NWRA. It might be something in the water. Be careful what we do here. No, it's great, wonderful. And again, my condolences to Mel Webster and his family, who lost his father. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Question on Havel Street. I didn't drive down there today. Was the paving underway or not?
It is.
It is, okay.
Beginning from the north.
What?
Beginning from North Street and moving south.
Moving south, okay.
Yeah. It's about halfway done, and they were expecting, as of this morning, to finish tomorrow afternoon. The variable is, depending upon where they're at, at the time school releases, and they need to modify their schedule.
Okay.
But they were planning to do it in two days, and I think it's about the top half, maybe a little less than half, has been paved. A little further on the southbound lane than the northbound.
And is that the last big project now?
I believe it is, yes.
Jeffrey?
Just a quick question. Is going from North Street south?
North Street south to Park.
Okay.
You haven't been up there?
No, I have. I came around the turn and I noticed...
Were you running or were you driving?
I was running, I was running, you know.
Oh, okay. How are the road conditions?
I had to make a call to make sure that they weren't working while I was running. But that's why I noticed that you're not going north.
All the drains are all raised and everything, they've been left there for a couple of days.
Yeah, but they're doing great work, I can tell.
And the weather was lousy, so. So we've got, we did have a financial planning team meeting, and I think Michael mentioned that, you know, we're not beginning to focus now on the budget process. Our meeting's over, and we'll keep the board informed as we move along to deal with the issues. It's a little early in the game, but it's not too early to formulate at least a realistic revenue plan. And that's about all I have. Anyone else has anything?
Jeff was just pointing out, you know, the capital program planning committee has been meeting in...
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, we, I believe it was just changed, and I'm going to have to talk off the top of my head. The fire department is going to come in Wednesday?
I think so.
Yes, the fire department's going to come in Wednesday, and DPW, I think, will be following that. We did have to make a switch. But we're starting, we're starting the process of reviewing all of our capital expenditures for 2017 and beyond.
Okay. I'm glad you brought it up because I forgot one important thing. On Friday, there was a meeting, is that over Mr. Bernard's office?
I believe so.
On the school roof project, little school roof project, and I was going to ask if you can attend to that?
Yeah.
And are there any other members of the board that want to go to that meeting?
This coming Friday?
Yes. I'm out of town. And if there's going to be three members, Michael has to post the meeting, so that's what I'm asking. No, if you want to go, fine. It's just a matter of getting the meeting posted, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I won't be able to make it, so.
I can, if you want.
Okay. Careful to be there. No need to post.
Okay.
The capital program planning committee has taken on a setup of pretty aggressive calendar right now over the next few months to tackle all the requests and needs, so it's going to be interesting, challenging.
Yeah.
I think one decision has to be made as to whether or not they want to take a piece of the, or portion of the financing of the little school roof.
Right.
And include it in the capital plan or not.
We, that, we did discuss it, but we just briefly discussed it at that point.
Yeah, there's no, no conclusion yet. Quite to see what...
Well, I think you have to look at everything first, right?
Right, yep. But that's on the radar.
Good, great. At this point, there's nothing else I call...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. I don't favor.
Aye.
Very good.